Calling up, please call.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson.
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Simmons. Councilmember King.
Present.
With six present, one absent, there's a quorum.
Move to excuse Councilmember Jay Simmons.
Port.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Uh, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It's due to the public for which it stands, one nation.
Good evening, everyone. I will not entertain a motion for agenda approval. Is the move?
A sport.
Um, are there any updates or changes that folks would like to see? All right, seeing none, all in favor of agendas presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is our opportunity for public comment. Um, you'll have three minutes to address council. So we'll start with who is in the room and then we'll move to the Zoom space. So please, we'll start um with the list of who signed up and you can approach the podium. And if you could state your name and your address, if you feel so comfortable, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, the first person we have tonight is Ms. Sigrid Melvin. Good evening.
Good evening. Evening Sigrid Melvin, 401 West Michigan Avenue. I thank you for sending the building department and all whatever it takes for the inspection in our building. So this was done last week. I mean, it's quite upsetting, but it's been done. So now we have to wait if they follow up. Uh, first thing, since this is a two hundred year celebration of Ypsilanti, can we make it look like it was two hundred years ago? In this case, put all the bricks back on the sidewalk on Michigan Avenue and don't replace it with cement. Last year, the young man who was in the building department made a code and uh, send it over to Red Rock. Because the tree was lifting up the bricks. So the owner laid on those bricks, even them out, make sure everything is nice and even. Means no other building did it and uh, and uh, the trees are still uprooted. You know, higher one, lower one. So kindly put the bricks back. And I have a request for the mayor. They have a meeting with us at 401 West Michigan Avenue and bring the council person with you. So we know whom to address to. And uh, well, we're not happy with management, but this note was passed around today. It says, stop leaving trash in the trash room. And on the first floor hallway. The first floor trash room is open weekdays from eight to five. Only Mondays to Friday, no Saturdays and no Sunday. If you miss this time or have too big for the trash chute, please take your trash around the building to the dumpster outside the maintenance shop. Well, we have people in walkers and wheelchairs and oxygen. So you can't really expect them to drive around or walk around with the garbage to the back trash uh, compactor. Plus, when you get there, you can lift up the lid. Cause I tried it. And I'm pretty strong compared to the rest of people. So that's another issue we have. Well, I thank you for listening and I hope we have a meeting soon, okay? Cause we gotta make progress. Oh, the most important part I forgot. I would like for the city hall under the Freedom of Information Act to find out where our neighbors moved to or where they are. Cause some of supposedly are two months in the hospital, some are over there and some are over there. We don't know. The main thing is when UPS and FedEx make a delivery, they leave it on the floor in front of the office. There were ten packages for one person.
Well, Ms. Melvin, you're.
So I took the shopping cart and moved those in boxes upstairs. Next day I checked and see.
Ms. Melvin, your time is up, but we can talk more.
Where did your papers come from? Then the person doesn't live there.
Okay.
So that's why under the Freedom of Information Act, we want to know where our neighbors are.
Okay, yep, and I will, I'll reach out to you to schedule something, okay? Okay, thank you. Um, next on the list, we have Tim Kowalski. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, Tim Kowalski, I live uh, in College Heights on uh, on University Court. So I'm here, I'm just kinda asking if there's something we can do as a city to work with DTE to get better uh, electrical service and maintenance. It seems like every time the wind blows, you know, we have a power outage. And I don't know if it's like that everywhere in the city, but in College Heights, it's terrible. And then they're out for like five or six or seven days and it just, it's not a level of service that I think we should um, accept. And we, a bunch of us are already contacting the Michigan Public Service Commission. But we thought as a city, maybe we could have some discussion too with DT or how to improve our services. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Please. Good evening.
My name is Chuck Boltman. I live at two twenty South Huron in a new business called The Newton. I didn't sign up because I didn't realize I had to.
You don't have to.
We have, we are relatively new neighbors. We moved here eighteen months ago and we have been doing a lot of work on the property, including some landscape kind of maintenance. And um, we were trimming the trees, the city's trees in the median and laid out all the limbs that we trimmed. Because I had asked for the city to come after the storm last winter and look at them because they were brushing people's heads. And nothing happened, so we trimmed them ourselves and we were rewarded with this. Now, I know you have important business, but um, since this is a citing of the law that the council is responsible for, I figured as feedback, you might want to understand how it affects us a little bit. So the law basically says that I can not have brush on my property, anywhere on my property for any more than forty-eight hours prior to being picked up. Um, as you all know, pickup is now fourteen days. Um, where do I put the brush? It cites in this law that the reasons are unkempt and unsightliness, which of course, it's a work in progress. You know, we cut things down, we clean them up, we cut more things down, we clean them up. It also cites that it's about hiding place for vermin. What is vermin? Vermin's not really a thing, is it? Vermin in the Latin means, I wrote this down, a creature that is not usually thought of as troublesome. The inference being until it is. Vermin in some places of the world is bedbugs, cockroaches, rats, mice. In some places it's cats, other places it's dogs, some places it's goats. Here in Michigan, you could call deer vermin. So that's the criteria. So really, what is hiding in my brush? I don't know. But when I only have forty-eight hours for it to be on my property, anywhere on my property, and it gets picked up every fourteen days, what am I supposed to do? Wait till the last two days to do the work? The policies and the laws put me in this position and I don't know how to solve it. Because I can't just do the work two days before. You have important business, this is minor, but you can fix this. Our laws should not be troublesome in such a way until we think about them, right? So we don't want to have vermin laws. So can we fix this, please? I'm happy to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council, please? Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Adam Tasselmeier and I'm here tonight as, asking that you vote no on resolution twenty twenty-three dash one five one regarding amending chapter seven. Ypsilanti is already one of, if not the most saturated municipalities in the state when it comes to adult youth retail marijuana facilities. February Planning Commission recommended capping retail facilities at thirteen and rolling back to ten if a permit holder fails to renew or their permit is revoked. The city has already used the scoring rubric in the past for the application process, so reinstating that would not be an issue at all. Um, threat of litigation is slim if there is a cap adopted. Ann Arbor has a cap. Um, there is currently twenty-six locations in Ann Arbor. Um, it's twenty-nine square miles. YPSI has thirteen right now. It's four square miles. Um, voting no on this ordinance does not end this. Voting yes will get rid of the cap. And there's no going back from that. This can be reassessed in the future, brought up again in the future. Um, having nineteen locations in this city is going to, I'm all for a free market. This industry is going through lots of changes right now and with nineteen locations, a lot of the new locations that will be coming in will be from multi-state operators, larger corporations, people with much bigger funding, much deeper pockets than the smaller locally owned operators that we have here now. And last year for the, Herbal Solutions has been here for twelve years. Last year was the first year we lost money. Um, it's inevitable if these locations go in, they will not all make it. And the chances are that the ones that are gonna go are the small locally owned business owners that live here and care about this city and contribute to this city and give back to this city. And you will have a bunch of corporate, which I, I always thought YPSI was against gentrification, against, you know, big corporations coming in. That would kind of be like me renting out my building that I have on Michigan Avenue here to a Chili's. Um, cause that's who you're gonna have in this industry. They're gonna force out the smaller locally owned, single owner operator shops. Um, please vote no on this. If you're on the fence on this, please vote no. If you don't really care about this, please vote no. Um, I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any, sir? Good evening.
Good evening. Hey council, the first thing I want you guys to do, I want to do a little house cleaning. When you guys come to council meet, eat your supper before you come to council. Because it's very, it, it, it's very, absolutely. You don't eat at council meetings. You don't do that kind of junk. All right, now, let's get on with the get on. I hear some news that I, that, that I heard this morning that it wasn't disturbing to me because I expect to hear anything now since we got a new police chief that's trying to lead the uh, uh, Ypsilanti uh, city police department in the right direction. I hear that we are going to contract uh, 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 with the Washington County Sheriff's Department to our detective work. Listen to it. I have no problem with whatever the chief does to get this whole running right. Cause that's what Ypsilanti Police Department is. It's a devilish hole. And whatever he needs to do to get it running right, come on, let's do it. I have no problem with that. If this police department was a police department upstanding and running proper, uh, Chief Moore wouldn't have to be here. He wouldn't even be here. He would stay where he was. But since he's here, we need to support whatever he does with Washington County. I mean, you, you guys gotta, people have to understand, this guy has the power to say, come here. He has, he can be a Macedonian, if you know what a Macedonian is. He can be a Macedonian and say, hey, come over here and help us. He can do that. He has the power to do that. So I'm just hoping that the city can go for it or the people can go for it. Leave the man alone and uh, uh, let him do his job, the best job that he can do for the city of Ypsilanti. Now contracted Washington County, I, you know, if that, if that's his choice, that's his choice. I don't like Washington County. I do not like it because they, they run, they're not running efficient themselves. But it's okay. I just want him to do the best he can for the city of Ypsilanti. Cause if, if it was running right, chief, you wouldn't be here. You'd be someplace else. It's broke down, raggedy, tow up and hoping he can be what we call the cleanup man.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Mr. Williamson, come on up. Good evening.
Anthony Williamson, Director of Washington County Community College Park Ridge Center. So I just wanted to actually give accolades to, I'm so bad with names, but ever since Bonnie, know that.
Bonnie.
I know that, I know that. Has been with facilities and whatever role she does there. Park Ridge and her work and attention has been uh, given to Park Ridge has been magnificent. Um, everything that we've asked for and I've asked for for years are, is now being done. The center is looking better. Um, repairs are being made. I just really want to thank you for the work that's been done there. And also I wanted to share with the chief, both chiefs, that this is the first year we have a new manager, Mia Lanier. Um, I'm gonna wait, I'll meet the third week and, so the third week I'll be back.
Not this month, though.
Not this month? Okay, so I gotta share with you now.
Yeah. Just one off.
So August fifteenth is my last day at Washington County Community College with Park Ridge Community Center. I'm officially retiring from that position. Cause I don't like children like that anymore. Uh, and so I want to look to a, in a different direction, but to support what's happening in Ypsilanti, because I love Ypsilanti. It's a city that I call home now. But this year Mia Lanier, um, our new manager, did a great job of connecting with all the city organizations. We've had the fire department there, we had the police department there, we had the EMS part of the police department too. We had them there as well, just interacting with and interfacing with our kids. And I don't know if you guys follow social media, it's just been really wonderful. So I just want to say, hey, Ypsilanti has been doing a wonderful job here as it relates to Park Ridge. That's the only thing I can speak about and I just want to thank everybody and give my accolades to those who've done great work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
You are participating virtually and would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Counsel, no hands are raised.
Right. Okay, well, seeing none, we will close public comment. Um, thank you all so much for your comments this evening. Uh, Councilmember Tucson, I believe you have our consent agenda.
Indeed. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Each thing on that.
All right, so this is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one four five. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. One, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-six approving the minutes of the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-seven approving the declaration to turn the town teal for cervical cancer awareness. Um, resol- resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-eight approving the alternative meeting dates for the July and December board of review meetings. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-nine approving Rachel Fry, HR Director, to represent the city of Ypsilanti as officer delegate at the municipal employees retirement systems conference. And resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-nine A approving an amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents for the motor rebuild of engine one to be used by the fire department. I so move.
Support.
The move is supported. Clark Alanga, you can call the roll.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Six yes and one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Wilcoxen, after you're done signing that, you have our first resolution.
One second.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one five zero, resolution to approve Washington County Brownfield redevelopment authority reimbursement agreement. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that whereas the city of Ypsilanti has worked on the cleanup and redevelopment of a water street project and whereas there are cleanup and redevelopment costs. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti and the Washington County Brownfield redevelopment authority agreed on a plan for the tax increment financing and sharing of tax increment revenue in twenty fifteen. And whereas WC B R A uh, has now received some T I R and, and, and an agreement for disbursement is needed. Now therefore, the certain Washington County Brownfield development reimbursement agreement is hereby approved and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the same for on, for and on behalf of the city attorney. City manager is authorized to approve any technical changes subject to the approval of the city attorney. And I so move.
Abort. The move is supported. Uh, city manager, do you have a presentation for us on that?
Um, absolutely. As you can see in your packets, there is a draft agreement uh, between the city of Ypsilanti and the Brownfield Authority. And it is just um, authorizing us to receive or to request reimbursements for costs on the water street uh, site. So if you have any questions, hopefully everybody is ready with the documents in your packet. Um, I'll try to answer as many of those as I can. Nathan Wolt was unable to be here tonight. But has placed a memo in the packet um, explaining uh, the amount of money that is available to us and actually the co- the kind of services that can be used, that it can be used on. So if you got any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel? Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Hello, thank you. Um, one question I have is just, um, I was trying, I have some guesses, but I'm interested to hear in terms of thinking about um, what kinds of things we would be looking that we could reimburse at this time.
So there was, um, I believe there was a graph that kind of came along with the memo. That sort of showed, let me see.
That, that all of that amount in terms of the, what was that, twenty something, two million or something?
No, that's the total amount of the pot. The portion that the city of Ypsilanti is um, entitled to is like two hundred and twenty thousand that we have captured from the existing family dollar that's on the site.
Wait, so I'm sorry, is there, just so I can make sure I'm looking.
So you're asking for what eligible costs can be covered? Is that your question?
I'm just thinking about like our current things that we might be reimbursed for, like examples of things now to this point.
So to this point, um, things that we've been invoiced for are borrowings on site. We can be, you know, we can be reimbursed for those, all the way to administrative costs.
So then like the things for with uh, PKT and then with Carlisle Wartman, like those kinds of costs, the different contractors we've had.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Sabar. Thank you. Uh, Steve, can you strike that on the, oh, Andrew already has it, okay. Thank you. Further questions or comments, discussion from council?
I was under the impression that this was also uh, uh, you could backdate this. So anything that we've been invoiced.
You can.
Back to twenty fifteen when they pass.
Absolutely, they can be invoiced. Actually, on page fifty-three of your packet is the table.
Yeah.
That shows eligible activities.
Do we intend to backdate anything at this point or are we gonna?
I think um, we're probably.
Yeah, I just wanna.
I think we're gonna try to use all the money.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, anything else? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, you have our next resolution.
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one four three. Can we do that? Uh, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved planning services proposal from Carlisle Wartman. And I so move.
Support.
Move and supported. Any additional information, city manager?
This item was tabled at last meeting um, to get some cost analysis. And Megan from Carlisle Wartman is here to uh, answer any questions. We presented some in the packet, but perhaps you may need further detail or Megan can go ahead and explain those to you at this point.
Thank you. Good evening.
And I also like to say in my first um, memo, I recommended proposal, um, I'm sorry, option two. But I'm now um, recommending option one, which was more of the à la carte where we could be billed hourly and we could choose which um, you know, activities or things that we needed from them. So also want to make that a point. Megan?
Um, in the memo that's in your packet from us dated, dated July twenty-seventh, we provided um, some more numbers around services and estimates. Um, particularly in option one, that, that organizational and staffing audit would be three thousand dollars. Um, anything for development reviews would be passed through to the applicants. Special projects, those would be to be determined with the city manager and the department and then approved before they would be going forward. Um, and then um, office support, we gave you a number of anywhere between twenty-nine thou- two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and nine thousand two hundred dollars a month. Where that number came from was ranging between five hours to sixteen hours a week. Um, and using a mix of hours from a planner to um, a principal so that you, we tend to, what we tend to do is estimate high on these things so that we aren't ever in a situation where we've given our clients an estimate and then have to be in the awkward position of being over.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah.
Questions from council? Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Hello, thank you. Um, so a question I have, for instance, with option one and the um, six month uh, requirement. Uh, when would, let's say, you know, we're four months in, we're like, oh, we're behind. Blah, right? Um, what does that look like in terms of if we wanted to get additional services? Would it still be on six month by six month? And about when will we need to be starting those conversations if we wanted to have extended time?
If you wanted to have extended time, what I imagine we would start to do is talk in month four about what that looked like. Um, and then readjust from there. I think it depends on where your staffing levels are at, at that point. Um, and also what services you want to continue or you feel that as you could bring additional staff on or no longer needed from our, our firm.
So it is our intention to have the audit done and then post for the job. Cause I said, I think you said the audit takes about two months.
Yes, ma'am.
So have the audit done and then post for the position and then have uh, Carlisle Wartman work with our selected candidate. To, you know, to try and bridge and exchange information. And so it is my take that six months would probably be sufficient if we moved and things happened according to that timeline.
And might it be, cause as I'm under, just so I can, it's multiple positions. So would it be one in particular or might it be two? Cause it, it seems like, right, it's like kind of two positions that were merged and we might need to unseparate them again. So would it be hiring for both?
So at this point, I'm going to be posting for the planning director. And I'm also going to be looking at that audit because that audit is going to be drawing the lines so that I will know what we actually need in an economic development director.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So are you saying that you're planning to post for the planning director now and then after the audit would, no? So after the audit, you're going to be focusing on the planning director position and that maybe then future might be an economic director.
Right, and it could be that the, the audit report shows that, that it could. Right, and it could be that the the audit report shows that that it could be one of the things that the economic development director does. If they see that, you know, there's enough time for it, um, that the workload doesn't appear, because it's going to depend on what our developments are, right, of course. Um, but it depends on what the audit says, because I know our previous economic development director had a lot of hats. We don't want to repeat that, but we do want them to have the technical skill set, technical skill set to be able to act as a planner. Sometimes we do have two um fairly new planners, but they're doing a great job. They're in the audience wave. And so they're they're coming up to speed. And so um having this next person had that technical skill set would be a plus.
Additional questions? My only question is about the the resolution, maybe this is for um the clerk. Because the recommendation was option two originally, does that, it isn't specifically say which option, so would we have to amend it to give the option? Does it say option one?
The resolution doesn't indicate an option, so you just do a friendly amendment for option one.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Oh, I made the motion, so it doesn't matter. Uh, to amend for option one.
Support.
Yeah, we support. Perfect, so it's been amended. Um, are there any other discussion or questions before we move to vote? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Megan. Clerk coming up, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yeah.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Count, Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Just six yes and one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Dee Simmons, you have our next resolution. Okay.
It be resolved by the ci- council of the city of Ypsilanti that the certain ordinance entitled an ordinance to amend chapter seven marijuana be adopted on second and final reading. I so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion. Me? Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Um, I didn't really necessarily plan, but I do want to just say um that uh I think the point that Adam.
Pass on my air.
Yes, the point that Adam brought up um around thinking about the businesses coming in and that um they may have deeper park pockets and like push out kind of smaller businesses is something that I'm definitely kind of thinking about and and considering what that, what that means and what that looks like. One of my concerns in terms of um uh kind of limiting at this point is that there are different uses, um different kinds of businesses that would not be able to even really explore options at this point, um if we were to cap right now. And um I think that there is more room for other kinds of um marijuana businesses, including consumption sites, um which wouldn't be allowed um at that point. And so um that's definitely something that I think um that I'm considering, but I do appreciate um what that, those considerations. And I also think about the spaces where people would be going into um a lot of the um things that we've seen in terms of um the fixing of locations and things have taken an incredible amount of of funding to do. Um, but I do think that we're, it's you know, we're kind of running out of some of those spaces and also that um with some of our surrounding municipalities starting to open up opportunities, that those will also be places where people will also look to open businesses that are not already saturated. So um uh, I would hope that, you know, as people are doing their business plans, that they take into consideration really not only the number of businesses that we have um and the quality and the, you know, the loyalty of the customers and all of that, but then also um uh, in terms of of, you know, thinking about what it would take for them to kind of come in into this space and maybe they'll choose a different spot. So just wanted to respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I agree with almost everything you said, honestly. So thank you. Anything else from council, Mayor Proton?
Um, just a point of clarification, um, the original ordinance had uh language that would allow you to cap individual types of businesses. Um, Mr. Barr, could you um confirm that that would still be the possibility?
Yeah, so that was remo- was it, it was removed?
You know, it's just that um Desiree had uh mentioned that if we cap it, uh, there'd be, there would be certain businesses that wouldn't be able to open. Um, and uh each of those business types are listed individually and you can cap each of them separately from the others.
Thank you. Right. Further discussion or comments, questions from counsel? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
No.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
No.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
No.
Councilmember Tucson.
No.
Motion fails with two yes, four noes, one absence.
Yeah. Clerk, can you tell me now, what does that mean?
The current chapter seven stands.
As it is, perfect.
And how long is the more time?
Ends December twelfth.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, councilmember Dee Simmons, you have our next resolution.
It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the ordinance named an ordinance to repeal chapter seventy-eight parks and public property and chapter seventy-nine public art and replace with new chapter eighty parks and art be approved on second and final reading.
Support. Hope.
And moved and supported. Any discussion? I do. Councilmember Sweet.
I just wanted to follow up on some conversations that were brought up at the last meeting and that there was, I did have a chance to talk to some more members of the Arts Commission and that um the actual commission themselves is, did not endorse what was um addressed to counsel at the last meeting. Um, just as a um FYI, so everyone is aware of that and that the commission as a whole um is on board with the changes um despite what you may have been told directly at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes. Um, so uh, I just wanted to kind of bring up a couple of things um thinking about kind of this work uh related to this ordinance um and um kind of the process that we've been going through in terms of thinking about the commissions. Um, you know, it's kind of hearing the discussion that was happening last week, um, it really just kind of put into place for me when people talk about how council works together. Um, I saw this as kind of exemplifying the ways that we don't. Um, this is a situation that predated my time on council. We have one of the, one of the um commissions that hadn't met for almost a year by the time I joined. Um, that had not been brought forward by council members at that point as an issue to address, including the council member that was the liaison with that group. Um, when I brought it forward on my first day on council, um, I asked about what we could do about this. So that was November of two twenty twenty-two. Um, I asked multiple times about this um during, and at that point, nobody on council said, oh, hey, I have a suggestion. Oh, hey, I'm willing to work on this. Oh, hey, blah, nothing. Um, by the time we got to the point where we could have a work group, at that point, nobody on council said, oh, this is something I want to make sure to see come out of that process. These are things that we really want you to consider. These have been things that have been sitting on our minds. We got, went in, we had our two meetings as a group, we put forward information, the memo came out. Counsel, anybody could have said anything about that memo, could have asked questions, could have said, oh, these are concerns I have. There was none of that. We had a discussion during council. People were like, oh, well, here's this thing, but you know, okay, yeah, like mostly feel good. We come into the point, all of these different things. Um, you know, I just I just think about like, so here we are, we come through this and then it's now at another stopping point. Um, when I'm looking at, um, you know, we're like questions about talking with the commissions, et cetera. When we're, we're talking about bringing commissions together, it really doesn't make sense to, for one commission to be having conversation onto its own. And if we only, we already have commissions that have said they, that they're uninterested in the work, it doesn't mean that they're, they're not really necessarily considering the role process and what it is that council needs to see happen. Um, and looking at, you know, from the annual report, for instance, from Y-PAC um of the listed uh purposes that they have on here, um, there's three things of it that have happened. Strengthening the relationship between the community and the city of Ypsilanti, I mean, areas that they've been working in, I want to say not necessarily done. Uh, serve as liaison to enhance community police relations um and advocate for programs, ideas and methods to improve relations between the police and the community. And then providing an annual report to city council. So there's actually a lot within this that's not happening. And I wonder where that accountability and how we actually move to get those things done. When I brought up that there've been people who've approached me about concerns and I say, oh, that should go to the commission, the idea that we just give it back to the commission, you know, maybe those folks haven't come because they're like, maybe we don't want to necessarily only go to a place that feels like it's best friends with the police that we are saying that we have concerns about. So why would we actually expect that they would hold them accountable? We don't know what the process is for what that would happen um because it hasn't been put forward. Um, and so there's actually really no due diligence for for them to do, even if someone did come. And so I I actually feel like that's almost like like what, I'm not quite sure about that kind of uh suggestion. And when thinking about um, and I know at least one did take it directly to the police chief. So I wonder about the actual role that folks on this council believe that commission should play um and how they plan to adjust for ones that are not completing the work that has even been put forward for them to do. And um, you know, and I would say too, you know, um in terms of the ways, in terms of process for how council can do work, I also think it's important for us to name that you know, that a lot of things have to come here first to give uh uh credence, to give direction um to do work. So without that, we're just kind of talking in imagination. And so it seems to me that if we were serious, that we would be putting things forward in that way. Um, and we still, um, as the process has has been put forward, um, and as I would expect regardless, is that council still would um could put forward ideas um and suggestions in terms of what could happen within the bylaws of these groups. Um, as we should um get, provide clear direction, um, which people continually ask us for. Um, and so we still can and should do that um with the parks and arts. Um, one of my hopes would be that um uh, that we'll be able to be within that process and that will actually help to set the way for us to be looking at the rest of our commissions as we should be doing.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from counsel? Thank you. Seeing none, clerk, come on up, please call the roll.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, do you have our next resolution?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one five three, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas a community benefits committee was appointed to negotiate an agreement for a payment in lieu of taxes pilot for the development of two oh six to two ten North Washington. And whereas in order to properly negotiate said agreement, the committee is asking to extend the deadline of sixty days as provided by ordinance thirteen twenty-five. And whereas the committee is requesting an additional thirty days, moving the deadline from August twentieth to September twentieth. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approves the committee's request and extends the deadline to September twentieth, and I so move.
Support.
Report. Been moved and supported. Um. Any presentation, any comments on?
I'd just say the backstory for this, we had one, we've had one meeting so far, we have another um next week. And after the first meeting, they felt that they were going to need more time to accurately um flush out and have the conversations that they need to have as a group.
Any questions about this? Comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one five four, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti's bicentennial falls on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas a committee was formed by approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six one to plan celebrations throughout the year. And whereas the committee has planned an event on the date of the bicentennial at Riverside Park. And whereas the chamber of commerce has secured a special events liquor license through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for beer tent during the celebration. And whereas the sale of alcohol will be confined to a specified tent and have properly trained staff serving in a responsible manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Ypsilanti hereby approve the sale of alcohol on Riverside Park on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three in concert with the city's bicentennial celebration, and I so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions, discussion, or any presentation from our uh liaison about this?
No, just um clarity and making sure that they can move forward with what the chamber has um secured.
Questions, comments, concerns from counsel? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one five five, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted a special events policy and pursues the policy, the city may co-sponsor an event if it is of it, of general interest to the public in advances the city public image. Whereas this year, the Park Ridge Summer Festival and Joe Doolin Community Day will take place Saturday, August twenty-sixth and Park Ridge Park. And whereas the Park Ridge Summer Festival and Joe Doolin Day event organizer is requesting that the city be a co-sponsor of the twenty twenty-three event by providing a donation of one thousand two hundred dollars. And whereas the city council agrees that becoming a co-sponsor of the twenty twenty-three Park Ridge Summer Festival and Joe Doolin Community Day would be in general interest of the public and advance the city's public image. Now therefore it be resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the request to be a sponsor of the twenty twenty-three Park Ridge Summer Festival and Joe Doolin Day by providing a donation in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars, I so move.
Support. Been moved and supported. Anything from staff? This is pretty self-explanatory. Any questions, comments? I'm excited for Joe Doolin Day and the summer fest, per usual. All right, well, Mayor Proton.
Oh, it's just a great event. I've I've been going and staffing three different booths for the past few years and um it it's always a good time. Uh, sometime I'd like to go and not staff the booth.
Um, day.
That's it.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Thank you. Y'all are few weeks. Um, councilmember two, you have our next resolution.
Indeed, I do. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one five six, resolution to approve memorandum of agreement Washington County Sheriff and Ypsilanti Police Department, that is a big word, inter interagency, I'm sorry, interagency plan and agreement, temporary investigative assistance, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas the city of Ypsilanti and Washington County Sheriff have agreed on temporary investigative assistance and put the agreement into writing. Now, now therefore the memorandum of agreement Washington County Sheriff and Ypsilanti Police Department, interagency plan and agreement. interagency plan and agreement, temporary investigative assistance is approved. And the police chief is authorized to sign the agreement, subject to the approval of, of the city attorney, and I so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there a presentation or questions from council before we? Questions? So, so council saw um, kind of the basis for this MOU about a week or two ago. Um, I believe a copy of MOU is, the draft is in our packets that we should have reviewed. So if there's questions, we can have the chief. We also have our community engagement director, Derek Jackson, from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office in the audience as well, if there are questions. Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes, thank you. So I have um, a few different questions. Um, I'll just start off with, I guess, a basic question I have when I first saw this. I was trying to get a sense of, so I know there already is uh, collaboration and things with the different police entities in our area. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, is this, how this is different, additional, um? And also I, and maybe I missed this because, you know, I was trying to go through all this stuff right before when I saw this in the packet. Um, but also if there's a cost associated that is different or anything like that.
Good evening, Chief Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, be happy to address uh your questions. So first and foremost, we do, uh, this county has a, has always had a mutual aid um, agreements where we all work together, we support uh, the mission of the county and of course individual uh agencies. So we do work together in great capacity daily. Uh, what's different about this particular uh agreement is that it was a request by me. Um, I requested the specifics uh to allow for the investigation, the limited investigation of certain crimes to be conduct, conducted by the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office that was beyond the current capabilities of the city of Ypsilanti Police Department. I E homicides, attempted murders and high-profile crimes um, that necessitate a certain level of uh resources and expertise. Currently, the city of Ypsilanti Police Department has one investigator. That is not a sustainable uh mission, plan, uh, it is negligent on our part. And as the chief of police is my duty and responsibility ensure that we provide the city of Ypsilanti with the best possible service. By requesting uh this uh mutual aid from the uh, the sheriff's office, it gives us, and this is temporary, uh, and it should be noted that we still have jurisdictional responsibility. We still have uh, a very high stake in everything that occurs uh in the city of Ypsilanti, in particular supporting the effort in investigating those types of cr, those types of crown, crimes. So all of those things uh put together, there's no cost associated with it. This is just merely uh a mutual aid agreement, and we needed to spell out uh, how exactly that would take place. When you have uh inter-jurisdictional, inter-agency agreements, we need to make sure that we're clear on each other's role and how it will be carried out in the event that we do have one of these crimes and that we need to investigate. So the agreement really spells out all of the details, and of course you can't account for every single thing. But we've accounted for a lot, and we've committed to each other that of course if there are issues, then we'll work together. But we still, the city of Ypsilanti still has to uh, conduct investigations on a daily basis with all the other crimes and crimes that does not rise to this level. I think it's important that we're able to provide the very best service to the community. And so there is also a plan in place to move us forward so that we can re-establish our own investigations division, and this is just a part of that process.
Thank you. Um, there are a couple of parts of the agreement that um, I had some questions or just wanted some clarity around. Um, let's see here. Just real, I just noticed I can like highlight and circle things in here, y'all. It's gonna change my life. Um, so uh, one is um, there's a couple of places where it talks about um, uh, like, and so this is, this first one is in scope and purpose, so two D. So it says, it in no way binds, constricts or limits the sheriff and their role in exclusive discretion and any action he may deem appropriate or necessary at any time for the execution of the duties and responsibilities of their office. And other kind of things that say, you know, obviously kind of supersedes to the sheriff's uh department's policies and procedures and and kind of their discretion on different things. So uh, a question I, I had is just whether um, I don't know kind of where there are differences or not, um. But yeah, if, if that's something that you have a sense of where there might be differences and what that might look like, um, and things that um, may differ from just what the Ypsilanti Police Department may have as a policy or procedure or practice or ways that if there were something that came up, that there was a question about where we can say, oh, that doesn't really match with our standards or things of that sort.
So, but I think I understand your question, um, and not speaking for the sheriff's office, but as it pertains to policy. So if they're gonna uh, be primary on a particular investigation, then that investigation needs to be governed by their policies and procedures. So in other words, how they would, their normal course is what will be followed in investigating uh, that incident. It would be cumbersome and really not a, uh, not beneficial for either party if we tried to merge each other's policy in investigating a capital crime. So by asking for uh, this assistance, if we have a capital case that the sheriff's office is going to investigate, then their policy will govern the manner in which they investigate it.
And then for, if they, so if there's something and they decide not to investigate, then it would just fall back to the Y P D um, investigator to take on?
Yes, if there was, if there was an instance where we were on offense, if it met the criteria, then we would discuss all of the options involved. And then make a decision on uh, how it be, how it would be investigated. So ultimately, we still have to uh, have jurisdictional uh accountability, and so it will fall back to, to us.
And then the last one, so around access to information, so I'm guessing these are the um, different investigators that would have access to them, like
Right.
The, in other words. And then what, for investigative purposes, so then would they? I'm just trying to get a sense of like the scope, so they would have access, and then is it the expectation that they would just be using that for things as they came up, you know, going forward? Or um, that once they have access, they could just, they can go and, you know, go into all the different cases or different things like that?
No. So their scope is strictly for a case that they would take primary uh jurisdiction over. And that would be, but they would have all access to uh, all investigative opportunity and tools to successfully investigate that crime. So in other words, we arrive on scene, we have body camera footage. We need to make that available to the investigating uh entity, just as we would for our own. If we were investigating ourselves, our investigations division would have access to all of those pieces. So it's the same thing, it's just spelling it out in words to make sure that we don't have any hiccups. So that in the event that this does occur, we have a plan in place and it's operational and it's smooth.
Um, and then I think my last question is just, um, so with the, so this is about four months, a hundred and twenty days. Um, in terms of uh, I guess it's a two-part, which is just, um, I don't know, you said you had a, a plan. Um, probably to increase staffing in that area, I'm guessing. But you know, that, at that time, would there be an expectation that it might extend forward? And or if there, um, what is kind of the uh transitions, right? So like, once their time is up, is it, if it's uh, they have cases that they're already primary on, so they kind of maintain those cases? Um, and then, or would there be a handing off of cases, or what would that look?
So if they take primary on a case, they will carry that case to adjudication. So there will be no uh transferring of the case. We will evaluate the effectiveness of what we're doing every thirty days to ensure that it's operating smoothly and, and it serves the needs of both uh, Ypsilanti Police and of course, the sheriff's office. So as we move through this process, if there's a need, you know, we'll discuss it. And we'll have that uh, you know, that dialogue to see that it's working or not working uh for both parties involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Moore. Councilmember King?
I just have a quick question. Will we have access to the evaluation? Like, will we be capping the loop? You said every thirty days.
So yes, if there's, all of this is, is public, it's not, you know, it's not the private. But I, obviously, uh, my intent is to keep this body informed of our progress and what we're doing. My knock on wood, and you know, hopefully, we won't even have to use any of this. But in the event that we do, we need to make sure that we are prepared and have a plan in place. But we will absolutely, uh, I will ensure that you're abreast of any developments, any changes, and how it's going.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, further questions or comments from council?
Thank you, Chief Moore. What I, what I'll just say is that um, when the chief approached uh, the city manager and I initially with the intention to move in this direction, it was very thoughtful um, in terms of how to best manage the department in the state that it is currently and how to move us in a direction that, you know, is beneficial to everybody involved in the community as a whole. And we know that for many, many years, we fluctuated with staffing, we've had folks who have been um, working with really lean crews that can ultimately end up being dangerous um, in certain situations that they've been put in because we don't have enough folks on the road. And so this was, for some folks, it feels like something that's extreme to do. For me, it feels really um, wise to do for a short time to rework things and make sure that everybody is able to be safe. So not only are, are community members safe, but our officers have the ability to not be overworked and feel unsafe as they're out and about. To me, that brings mutual benefit to everyone um, in the community when people are in the best state of mind possible and working collaboratively together to ensure that we don't have incidents that we see happening um, across the country. That's what I thought of initially when the conversation started. Um, I appreciate the sheriff's department for being willing to partner with us um, to do this for a short time as our new chief gets acclimated and reworks the department in a way that makes sense um, for his vision for our police department. And I, I support this endeavor, and again, I appreciate you and the sheriff's department for working together uh, to support us in this transition time. Um, if there's nothing further, oh, city manager, please.
I just wanted to chime in to say that I support the um, request to enter into this agreement. Excuse me, and I appreciate the chief um, really putting uh policing at the forefront.
Sure. I wanted to say that I um, support the agreement and I appreciate uh, the chief um, prioritizing uh patrol at this point and uh, getting it to a place that he's satisfied uh with the manning before moving on. And so I think this is a great idea to uh utilize the services of Washtenaw County.
Thank you. Um, if there's nothing further, mayor person?
I just wanted to comment, um, I was approached by uh, a news agency, let's say. Um, twice on this issue. Um, they had gotten the internal memo and had uh, left messages framing this as conspiratorial and, and uh, a huge burden to the city in that it was secret and um, acted as if it had already happened and it was going to cost the city a great deal of money. Um, I didn't respond to those because of the way they were framed, but um, that's out there. People, people are going to be criticizing this and, and looking at this and under a lens of, of their own making, but um, uh, just want to put that out there. I agree with this. I think this, this relieves a burden that has been problematic for the department for some time. Um, it's going forward, it's not taking cases that are already underway. Um, that's another topic that I'd like to talk about um, at some point. Um, but I think this, this solves a problem and we'll see how it goes.
I, I guess really to just add on to that, this was done in a very transparent manner. All of council knew what um, our chief's intentions were and the rationale behind it prior to this MOU even being put together. Um, and there were plans for um, joint community press release for folks to know what's happening before it started. Unfortunately, you know, uh, that memo was shared uh, outside of our organization. And that's more telling about those who decided to share it um, rather than what was happening internally. And I just wanted to make that really clear that we were very much aware of what was happening and in support of us, it wouldn't have moved forward in the first place. We wouldn't be here with this on the agenda tonight.
If there are no other comments, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wolcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you so much. Um, next on our agenda, we have the discussion regarding the evaluation of the city manager and the city clerk. Um, so when we met last week, there was pretty much one area around language in terms of um, the terminology around professionalism. Um, and I didn't know if there were other items that needed to be uh, discussed or changed in the, in the tool before we move forward with uh, the, the timeline that we had established. Um, council member Dee Simmons?
So I came with um, some suggestions, language suggestions for each of the different parts. So I don't know if others did as well, but I'm happy to share what I I'm happy to share what I came with, up with. So um, uh, in one of the sections, so there is, this is on, so on the city managers. Um, I'm realizing I, I probably, uh, I might have only done this on that one, so.
I can hear whatever, you know.
Yeah, within the city clerk one, okay. So um, for the intergovernmental relationships, number two, uh, it talks, it says uh, something about professional image. Um, so my suggestion would be that that moves to, uh, let's see here, I have, or relevant outside parties. Oh, I also had taking out some of the things around like, where it's like, that we may or may not. And so anyway, so I just simplified it to say, or relevant outside parties while upholding the goals of the city.
Oh, you're saying, can you, can you read the full sentence so I know where that?
Okay, hold on, I don't have, oh, I'm just looking at my notes.
This has effectively communicates with other governmental entities or outside parties which the city may be involved with or become involved while maintaining a professional image of self in the city. So you're saying?
Just to go, or relevant outside parties.
Okay.
While upholding the goals of the city.
All right.
Um, the next one is uh, in relationship with public. And this is uh, number one. Uh, so it says, there was something to represent professionalism.
Yes, at the end.
And then I just have that changing to uh, responsiveness.
So establishes and maintains an image of the city of Ypsilanti to the community that represents service, enthusiasm and responsiveness?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That's a suggestion. Um, in management of employees, number three. Uh, it says, uh, there's, it says professional interactions. And I'm, my suggestion is to change that to maintain, maintains positive and ongoing interactions.
Positive? And ongoing.
Um, and then there's one where the title is leadership and professionalism. Um, my suggestion would be to change that to leadership and accountability. And then within that uh, area, number two. It says, um, it talks about um, kind of uh, professional improvement. And so for that one, I said that that's, it's kind of like professional development. Seems that that's kind of what professional improvement, professional development is. So I think that that is, to me, that's a fine use of it because it's in response to identified needs that they would put forward, that they would need more development. that they would need more development in. So I would leave that one there.
I think that's the, is that the last?
Yeah. So those were the ones. I only did it in the city manager. So whichever, those would correspond, I would say to the clerks.
Yes. Okay. So with the suggestions that Councilmember Dee Simmons has presented in those areas, does everybody feel comfortable with that? Cause I, I, I'm fine with those. Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and I will amend the city clerks to match um, what we do to the city managers in terms of where those comments, well, questions fall under with professionalism as the, the key word there. Perfect. So we did discuss the timeline at the last meeting. I lost it, but I, but I have it.
So the, the city manager and myself were supposed to have ours to counsel by the eighth. And then the first evaluation would be nineteenth of September. And then the second evaluation would be at the first meeting in October and that date, it sticks in me at the moment.
Yes, and I would have them compiled sometime in there. All right. I don't know where my sheet went. I had it here and I don't know where it is now. Um, okay. Does everybody still feel comfortable with those dates? All right.
Just send that as a reminder.
Yeah, can you send the dates out? Please thank. And then do we have to do any, any formal motion to adopt any of this? Okay, perfect. So scouts on everybody that we're going to follow this timeline, that Andrew is gonna send out to us. And we will have these evaluations done in a timely manner for the year twenty twenty-three. All right. Thank you all. Liaison reports, police advisory commission.
Yeah. So the Y PAC met last Thursday for a brief time because unfortunately, one of our commissioners had to leave. And I feel like we had to end the meeting before we got to like the nitty gritty of what we wanted to talk about. So I'm not too sure on the next meeting is, Andrew, if you could help me out, I'm sorry. Please don't tell me it's this week. September twenty-eighth is, oh, I'm sorry.
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth. Um, if anybody would like to attend the Y PAC meeting, it will be here at around seven o'clock. I hope to see everyone there if you would like to be there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, H R C.
No update?
We will be having a meeting to work through some of this, hopefully this week. Arts Commission.
No updates since the last meeting.
Right, last week. Arts and Rec.
Same.
Yeah. Sustainability.
Our meeting's coming up.
H D C, not here. Planning Commission.
Uh, has not met.
Z B K, there's been no meeting. Liaison Report, SMCOG.
No update at this time.
Our Watts liaison is not here. I don't know if any staff have anything. I'm sure nothing's happened since last week. Urban County, there's been nothing since last week. U D A, also nothing since last week. Friends of West River Pool?
Have a meeting tomorrow and there's a kids' triathlon before our next meeting. So on August twelfth, it's a Saturday morning, started about seven o'clock. This has been an annual event that was suspended due to COVID. And that will be happening again this year. It happened last year. And it's great. There's lots of little people running around and riding bikes and swimming in the pool. So. Come on down.
Thank you. Bicentennial Committee.
Two weeks from the Saturday is the celebration in Riverside. And then immediately the day after is also the bicentennial historic home tour. So. Coming up really fast. It's here.
All right. Thank you. Council proposed business. I'm gonna start on the other end today. Councilmember King?
So my business is, I will have, be having a block party on Sunday, August the twenty-seventh on Middle Drive from eleven to three. And I know when we first started, you mentioned Mayor Brown, a retreat. And I don't know how many people is, will be going to the upcoming M M L in October. And I was wondering if, if everybody was going, possibly we can do it that time.
Is everybody going? I don't know who's going.
I don't know either.
Everyone except for Councilmember Simmons has requested to go.
Oh, Jay Simmons.
Well, we could definitely figure something out since most of us are going to be there. Road trip.
I do think that I would like to like in the fall, um, have like a, a formal retreat of some sort, or we kind of go over our expectations for the year, upcoming year and stuff like that. But I do think this is a good opportunity for like a more informal retreat. At M M L. So.
Great idea. Thank you.
Is that all you have tonight?
That's all.
Um, Councilmember Dee Simmons?
No business.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton?
I'm not tonight.
Number Sweet?
Nothing. I'm in.
Roll me down. All right.
I got something.
All right.
All right. I actually have a few things. Recently I was in communication with a resident that lives at Hart Play, yeah, Hart Place. And he expressed to me that there is a ongoing issue with the street in front of his home as it pertains to like water collecting in front of his driveway. And he invited me out to personally see it and it looks pretty bad. His concern, his main concern is not only for his kids being around it, but the kids in the neighborhood also being around it, potentially getting sick from whatever may be collecting in that, in that, uh, in what looks like a cesspool of water there. And he has been in contact, he told, he spoke, he told me that he's been in contact with somebody in the city, though he hasn't been able to give me a specific name that they said that it's not a city issue. It's a issue that he has to resolve himself. I was wondering if I could potentially get some more information that I could give to him about that. I will get the address for you all. Yes. So that's that. Also, my second thing of business to speak about this evening. After everyone is participating in the triathlon on the twelfth, after you guys get your running and your swimming and your biking done, you guys should come on down to Ford Lake Park. For, at Ford Lake Park, we'll be holding an all-day field day event for not only the kids, but the whole community. My business partner, Mike, and I have been working diligently to make sure that everything is in place as far as games, music, food, by which the food will be supplied by Cuppies on Washtenaw. If y'all know anything about Cuppies, pretty good. So I invite everybody to come. Um, it is a free event. Um, besides the entry fee into the park, which is like five dollars. Bring yourself, bring your family, bring your friends, bring your friends, friends and their kids, you, everybody. And help us make this a event that just makes the community feel warm and together. Cause that's something that we definitely, definitely need. And that is all that I have.
Thank you so much.
You are very welcome. Always, always.
Very animated. All right. Communications from the mayor. Really, I just want to thank our, our city staff for all the work that you all have been doing. I know there's always something brewing in Ipsy. There's always work to be done. And in moments when I don't have difficult things to talk about, I would like to give you praise because you deserve it. And so thank everybody for all of your work. Um, I'm really looking forward to all the upcoming community events, Summer Fest, the Field Day, Triathlon, all the wonderful things. Um, I want to thank our fire and police for going out for National Night Out. Am I saying it wrong? National Night Out, um, today at Recreation Park. Um, and really engaging with the community. So just again, just thank you all so much. It's been a really, really busy summer for us all. And we got, we're in a home stretch of summer and moving into fall when more things arise for us to do. So, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a great announcement. Um, the city of Ypsilanti was awarded five point eight nine million for our fire and police pension system. Michigan Department of Treasury established this for municipalities that were underfunded, that were below sixty percent. Um, and we qualified and we applied and we were approved. So.
Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. That's wonderful news. Great note. All right. Well, this is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address council, please raise your hand and I will call on you to approach the podium. Mister Tousen? Oh, I actually have something to say about D T as well.
I was just wondering like when we'd get public comment, like, um, no, I, I just never been here. Is there, what's the process for the council to have discussion or tell us to jump in a lake or that, that you're going to help us figure out some of these problems?
Thank you. Um, so typically, public comment is not a back and forth. So if someone during public comment asks us a question, we don't respond in that time. It just slipped my mind that I did have a response though around D T to give at the end of all public comment. And that is that we are in really great communication with our regional representative. I've talked to her many, many times myself around tree trimming and making sure that things are being done to prevent some of these power outages. And we had a stretch where they've been working through neighborhoods. And so I'll be glad to reach back out to her around coming to see what needs to be done over in the other neighborhoods. But also, we have been leaning on them to fortify our electrical grids because we're just seeing longer power outages for, you know, more severe storms that we're getting. So it's definitely a priority of mine as well to stay in communication with Molly around what they can do to support us so that we don't have these lengthy stays without power. No problem. Oh, Mayor Proton?
I just want to say I'd be happy to have that conversation with you too. So I'm in your neighborhood.
Okay. Public comment. Mister Tousen?
I know you're ready to say Derek comes again.
Yep.
But you know what? He ain't gonna drop nothing but the truth on you. You should know the truth and the truth shall make you free, right? Okay. I like everything I hear about the, uh, the, uh, corporation you guys gonna do with the chief to, to move things forward. But I want to also let you all know the chief is brand new. He's brand new, man. And, 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 and and, and people should warn the chief about certain things that happens around the city, around the county. Because there are some funky things that happens around the city and around the county. Now watch this. The, the chief is gonna have to keep the sheriff department on his toes. Gonna have to do that. He's gonna have to do that. I'm gonna tell you why. Okay, we had one of the best detectives in the city of Ypsilanti that we ever had. And it copied. Whether you like it or not, she was the best Ypsilanti ever had. And I wish some provisions could have been made for her to stay here. I wish she had have stayed until the new chief come. But so she didn't. But watch this. She was banded. She was banded from the sheriff's department. Now she's a detective and she was banded from the sheriff's department of dealing with capital cases. They wouldn't let her have no jail calls. They wouldn't let her have nothing. And how did that happen? He gone. I wish he had have stayed here. How did that happen? That happened on the Derek Jackson's watch. Why? Because she arrested one of Derek Jackson's boys. Who had what? He was a felon, sex offender, and she, he got arrested by her. And what happened? They cut, the sheriff department cut all of her communications off. She couldn't do nothing. So chief, you have to keep your foot on their neck. I'm glad that you, I hear that they are not going to do no more sitting in, in the police department. I love that. Get out there and work. So we won't have no lieutenants and no sergeants playing putt-putt. Old grown rusty old men playing putt-putt in their office. Do your thing, chief. And as I said, I don't know if y'all heard about Tobacco Road. You young folk don't know about Tobacco Road. Tobacco Road, you know what they do to Tobacco Road? They bring in dynamite and a crane, blew it up and started all over again. Do it, boss. Do it, chief. Blow it up.
Are there others in the audience who would like to, Mr. Williamson?
Park Ridge Community Center. Just want to thank, um, thank the council. Thank the council for its trustees, this or council for approving the, uh, support of the Park Ridge Summer Festival and Joe Doolin Day. But going forward, I want you guys to keep this in mind. I helped support the rebranding of that maybe fourteen years ago. There used to be the Ypsilanti Black Arts Fair years ago. We are now sponsored by Washtenaw County. It's probably their biggest community, O C E D community thing. I think it should be sponsored by the city of Ypsilanti. And so as we look maybe for next year in some dialogues, some conversations, I think that it's a very good event. I don't know any other events outside of that that happen in the city park with a crowd that large. So if you can consider possibly looking at being the main sponsor, because although I'm leaving Park Ridge into college, I am staying in Ypsilanti. I'm definitely going to be a part of this committee. But I think it would be much better handled if it was Yps, the city, city of Ypsilanti's annual event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council?
Mrs. Tousen, hello. I just want to say a quick thank you to our chief. Welcome here. Your ninety days spectacular. We're very excited about what we're hearing. And as a community, we're here to support you. Just know that. Thank you.
Yes.
Valerie, Ypsilanti, Michigan.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Anyone participating virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. No hands raised, council.
All right. Well, thank you all for being with us in this very swift meeting we've had tonight. Councilmember King, you're gonna join us or I can do whatever you want to do. All right. The meeting is adjourned.